Two twenty committee of the whole meeting. Called meeting.
Trusty Hallwax, trusty listener, trusty Mealopolis, trusty underdog here, trusty Ruben, you're trusty Scott.
Yeah.
President Roman.
Here. So we have two trustees, trustee listener is on a train which is delayed, but she's going to be here. Trusty Hallwax is out of town, he is planning and doing it soon, but he hasn't called in yet. Village rules allow, trusty.
Sounds like he's calling him.
Okay, the village rules allow for somebody who's out of town for legitimate reason, which he is. Way remotely unless anybody ejects. An objection, so when he calls in, we'll hook him in. We're not live streaming the meeting, but the video recording will be available on the. Soon the village has recently adopted public comment rules because we have a regular meeting following this meeting, we're not going to have public comment at this meeting. If the next meeting regular work meeting starts. If you have a comment on an agenda item included on the whole agenda. I'll ask those comments, do we get that as part of the agenda? All comments related to agenda items, even to three sentences will strictly enforce that rule. And I'll leave in total public comments on. Actually, we're not going to have an agenda, so don't worry about that. Okay, if you're going to speak on an agenda item, say your name before you speak. Think I saw.
Reason, reason.
Okay.
I noted them.
Alright, well, the right show, right, the next item on the agenda is discussion and staff report. Glencoe Golf Club Clubhouse Project Budget and Construction Timeline. And I'll ask our golf club manager Stella Nannos and our village manager Phil Rouse present. Yeah.
Thank you.
Ben Stella.
Sure, let's start us off. We've made great progress since our last presentation, I know we've been updating monthly. But we wanted to give you a more comprehensive report tonight as we've hit some big milestones recently. But we have completed our design development portion of the project, stormwater management. The sustainability initiatives have all been confirmed, including the geothermal HVAC system, which the board recommended. We are going to be lead silver standard, we will not be getting the certification just because of the budget constraints for that. Bird safe building materials will be used. We've also almost completed our interior design phase. We had help from two of our members from the ad hoc designing committee that participated in two meetings. And offered very good feedback and good design direction on how the interior furniture should look. We are underway with our construction drawings, we had our fifty percent page review on June sixth. We've confirmed the site plan, some of the interior finishes. And that is the budget that we're going to present tonight as well. Our next big milestone will be July first, where we go over seventy five percent construction drawings. And let's go into the timeline. So we have a pretty tight timeline. And much of the budget that I will present on the next slide is based on staying on this timeline. Any delays in the timeline will majorly adversely affect the budget because we will have a guaranteed increase in labor costs, which our project manager has already told us to expect. If we don't want them pricing this year and also inflation. So for August, we will have a hundred percent construction drawings completed. The building permits submitted to county, the design or development bid packages will be made and released for public bid in August as well. We hope to bring demolition and early scope package for board approval in August eighteenth. By so.
Can you just explain the early scope package a little bit?
Sure, so in order to stay on time with the whole project, we and we're not going to have the GMP until September and the September board meeting, we can't really turn over a week to people and say, let's start shovels in the ground. So we want to get a demolition and early scope package approval in the August meeting, so that would be the demolition of the building and some of the the other items that have been confirmed, like site utilities, the asphalt, the stormwater management, all of those things can get underway. But we're looking for just a board approval prior to receiving the final bid documents, and that would be at the August meeting. So once we do receive the final bid approvals, we will be getting a GMP, which is the guaranteed maximum price that will be developed. And we will be bringing that to the board September nineteenth for final board approval. And then we will begin October first is our schedule. So it's, it's, there's a lot to be done, it's a very tight timeline. We're trying to have everything scheduled. You know, we have the seventy five percent lines are rescheduled and we spoke and we're in constant contact with the architects and the project manager to ensure that we can stay on the schedule. And then again, I can't reiterate how important it is to stay on the schedule to keep the budget in line.
One thing to just add, what's still talking about, what, you know, what is October, what does that mean in terms of the project getting started? So the hope is that if demolition can begin as close to October first as possible. We limit the need for temporary facilities to help operate the golf course during that period of time. By October first, food service is wrapping up quite a bit, we don't need to bring in a temporary food service trailer for the end of this current season. We would need to bring one in for the beginning of next season, but we would not have to maintain that the cost of that rental through the winter months, because essentially, as you mobilize, you really only want to mobilize once. We want to delay that mobilization until next year. The demolition would get underway, the clubhouse, we would keep the current pro shop building up during a large portion of construction so that that could support some of those day to day operations, because again, we don't want to close the golf course while construction is underway. But our hope is that particularly if we can have a winter like we just had. A lot of progress can be made during winter months, foundations poured, excavated and poured. Even potentially vertical construction getting underway. We want to try to limit the negative impacts of the parking lot changes so that portions of the parking lot can remain available for golf use next year. So that may mean the winter months are being utilized to construct or lay out portions of that, of that new parking, the new parking lot areas that are included in the project. So and then construction getting underway, as I've already mentioned, so that as much progress as possible can be made in the winter months. So that next year as we barrel toward project completion, we'd love to have the buildings ready to go by the end of twenty twenty five. That's about roughly a year, thirteen month construction window, which is tight, but possible based off of what we're hearing from WB Olson. So anyway, just to give you a little bit more kind of what comes after October and why kind of the, why that date is the date, we had originally talked with the board last year about the possibility that we'd be bringing bid documents to you now, this month. Our bid, bid results to you this month. Obviously, that is, that the timeline slowed down, it probably was an unrealistic one when we were working through it, particularly as we got into the design and development process, or the design review process with the ad hoc design review. So I just wanted to give a little bit more context.
Can I just ask one question, I'm sorry. It was like, so what could move us away from this timeline? Basically, we think this is all achievable or are there any?
We did not create the schedule, the project manager did. So this is, this is based on their, yes, this is based on their experience, they've allowed you know, three weeks for the bid documents to go out and come back, a week for them to review, so this is all based on their experience, so it's, it's very doable, as long as we, we stay on, on task.
Want to ask a few questions too, because I understand permit processes can also. Have we connected with the cook project building to talk at all about this and we, I'm not sure how long that.
Sure.
Yeah, no, we, we have, we've been in contact with the, so just take one, taking one step back, the land use agreement with the Forest Preserve District. As this building will sit on Forest Reserve District property, it's subject to Cook County Building Code. Which are for all intents and purposes, don't differ from our own all that much, but it does require going through that process. So we have been engaged with them, we started talking with the building department folks, gosh, last summer we had, we had some initial discussions and our ongoing discussions between WB Olson and our own staff team have inserted this timeline into their review process, so we anticipate that we, that it will move through the process at an appropriate clip. There are components, Taylor may be able to speak to this better than I can off the cuff. There are components of it that will fall to village review because we do that anyway for the, for a county process, for instance, at the Botanic Garden, something like that, fire.
Fire, we'll do a essentially an advisory zoning review, an engineering review as well. But I think the fire is, is the one that is, is ours.
Yeah, fire life safety.
Question is. University of Florida.
We do not have the permit yet, but we have been working closely with MWRD. Particularly as it relates to the parking structure, parking lots. Changes to the impervious surface area cause or kick in MWRD review, as you're aware. Because a large portion of the parking lot will essentially be rebuilt in its current location. There's a kind of a maintenance category, so portions of the the new parking lot don't need to be managed, it's only new portions that do, but the stormwater plan has been submitted. And my understanding is it's being reviewed, it has not, or it has not entered its formal review process, but they do have the initial stormwater plans.
That's rolling.
It's rolling, yeah.
We will give to the budget. So right now we are in line with our budget, we have some good news share. Number one, our unrestricted cash in the golf fund has increased because of the great year that we had last year. We are also trending for another good year this year, we expect it to be over budget. So that has increased, also a significant increase is the work that friends of the Glencoe Golf Club has been doing. We have received a pledge for a million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is an anonymous pledge at this point, friends wants to do a, a large announcement with a groundbreaking on this and hopes to raise additional funds. Our fundraising consultant has assured us that having this angel donor will you know, get additional donors to, to jump on board, based on our experience, this is typically how it, how it happens. So we're, we're happy for that. We are still holding two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in expected grants, the geothermal is typically well funded, our architect has told us that geothermal brands are pretty easy to get. So now that that has been confirmed, we are hoping to, to get a, a very big portion of that as well as other sustainable, you know, parts of the building, perm use the surface in the parking lot. The integration of native and pollinator plants throughout the property, our stormwater management, there's, there's a lot of things that we can go after grants. We do have a consultant of Village Stiles that, that knows what to look for for us and has been keeping her eye out so that we can apply for those types of things. This budget does include a six hundred thousand dollar design contingency. So we're, we're very tight with the budget, we're going over every line in detail and our architect also knows how tight we are on it, so we don't want any surprises and if we get through a hundred percent construction documents, I'm sure there's going to be maybe a few things that pop up, but if they are minimal, once we get through and we get our guaranteed maximum price, we will no longer have to hold this contingency on our budget. So it's, it's a big number that, you know, I'm hopeful we'll be able to peel off a large portion of it. And based on the work that's already been done and the bids that we've got at fifty percent, I don't expect any big surprises. So hopefully we'll, we'll be able to take care of that, you know, removing that in the budget as well. So the geothermal has been part of the, the kind of the sustainable factor that we're also hoping to get fundraising for. People really like that we're going in that direction and the building is also going to be free of fossil fuels, with the exception of the char boiler, so it's, it's very, it's very minimal. This building will be the most sustainable public building in, in the village, once it's, once it's built. Lead silver standards, again, I mean, there's, there's a lot of thought that's gone into the development of those within the environment as well.
Just a point to add, Stella talks about, you know, a pledge that doesn't add up to the number that you see on the, on the screen. Part of that is due to the fact that as we work with this potential donor, there are a few amenity components that may be tied to the donation, and so we backed out about four hundred thousand dollars from that one point two five million. Which accounts for what this one point one three is. So the one point one three accounts for about eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred and twenty five thousand dollars plus additional resources that friends already has acquired through donations, so that's, just wanted to clarify that, the reason we don't have more clarity for you at this moment is because there are some pieces to the donation that aren't ready for public consumption. We want to make sure that we are thoughtful about all of that, and obviously the village has a donation policy. All of this would be in compliance with that donation policy, we're working with the, the potential donor on that information. But I just wanted to offer that clarity on the number because it's, as Stella said it, I'm like, well, that's not the number that's up there, I just want to make sure everybody's aware of what that is. The other point to make relative to this is, I don't want to, I don't want to double down on the grant stuff too much, but Stella's point is a good one, there are a number of components of the building that we're hopeful would be attractive to both state and potentially federal dollars that run through state programs, so we are working with a consultant who we have worked with in the past. Who helped us generate some of the information that went into the grant application that got us the, the resources to pay for a significant portion of the bluff wall replacement last year. And unfortunately, some of the state programs that we were hoping for OzLab being one of them, the park district has been very successful at getting resources, just wasn't funded this year. So we're not sure that there are going to be additional funds, funds available. We were thinking of that in particular as a component of some of the improvements around the driving range that we've been talking about. One of which being a walking path that we refer to from the sidewalk network that ends at Wesley and Holfelder, but would provide a, a clear walking path to keep people off of Wesley, which is a very narrow street, that is still something that we're working through in terms of future programmatic designs, but as we're able to, we will let you know how our progress is coming from the standpoint of additional grant resources. Sorry.
That was, that was the end of the presentation. Obviously, we're going to get questions.
Clear, good. Any questions? Okay, well, big project, still working. The next item on the agenda is discussion of additional studies concerning downtown parking and streetscape. Now I have our development researcher, Governor Chase Baxter, and the village chairman present on this.
President Holland. So there's background on this. The village has been working in partnership with the village of Maneka on a study of streetscape conditions and plans throughout the Hubbard Woods form. That's starting the north end of Hubbard Woods Plaza in Glencoe and then going south all the way through Hubbard Woods in Maneka. There are some draft concept studies that are part of your agenda packet, which I'm happy to answer any questions about. If anybody has any, we'll take comments on that. It's an ongoing process, it is, most of that district is in Maneka, a lot of the changes that are proposed are in Maneka. The changes that are being looked at in Glencoe, I would say are relatively minor compared to the changes in Maneka. No traffic rerouting, but a call for continuing sidewalk throughout, through the Hubbard Woods District, some improvements in landscaping. There was some discussion with Public House that we had in January about potentially adding a stop sign corner of living in Green Bay. It's a tricky angle there for pulling out, there have been accidents there, it's hard to see cars moving from your right if you're pulling out. That one met with a mixed response from, from the crowd there, some people were in favor of it, a lot of people were, were very much against it. It's still shown on there, but again, these are concept plans, these are, it's not a them showing up on this draft plan is not saying that we're calling for a stop sign at that intersection. So coming out of this, although this is an ongoing process, we've also been having the related discussion about downtown, about the topics of how we're using our public space in downtown, how it's allocated and used. And also streetscape, street crossing design and parking issues, which are ongoing issues throughout downtown. So out of these discussions, we're looking at potentially kicking off two studies, which might be combined into a single study, a parking study and downtown streetscape. The last time that the village did a parking study was in twenty fifteen, that was part of the downtown tune up process. And the main takeaway from that study is that problems with parking in downtown in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen were more a perception of a lack of parking and problems of inconvenience as opposed to a, a real lack of actual supply. There were a lot of traffic counts, pardon, excuse me, usage counts done throughout downtown, both sides of the tracks, different times of the week, different times a day. In the core of downtown, the maximum reported use was eighty one percent. The sixty nine percent number is actually, right, it's actually eighty percent was the maximum that was found to be used at any time in the commuter lots. This was pre-COVID, these, the study, the study was done in October of twenty fourteen. So there's a, a lot of issues with people having problems finding parking spaces exactly where they want them to be, or if they walk for them, they might want to walk. Like this study found, there's actually enough parking, there's always parking available somewhere. However, that's ten years old. Conditions have changed in downtown since then. A few things that have changed since twenty fifteen, we've installed new parking and wayfinding signage. There's been especially since COVID, accommodations for curbside pickup and other uses, we're just taking it parking in downtown. Dining taking up parking downtown, public safety has integrated new parking enforcement technology, which has helped us be able to collect better data, ongoing data than we had in twenty fourteen. We've also had more recently some parking lot use changes across the street, the southwest commuter lot recently switched from commuter and B permit to downtown three hour parking. Also, the, the, the business district blend, blend of uses is, is changed. By all accounts, it's a, a busier, livelier place. More traffic, we have more restaurants, more people using it, definitely more carryout delivery use, so you know, the way that people are using parking spaces downtown has changed in community. This has generated complaints, ongoing complaints from businesses and visitors to downtown by the lack of parking. So with this in mind, it may be time to discuss a, a new study. Where we can have new data, twenty twenty four data reflecting current conditions. Consideration of the changing way that people use downtown that we just discussed. And really a discussion about are our current policies correct, are they, are they successful, are they giving us the kind of downtown we want to have? It's hard to do that with ten year old data, the number of changes that we've had. A new study, in addition to tracking usage and the way that people are using parking downtown would likely include things like a consideration of various options for downtown, it can be updated signage. The location and time limits for different parking areas around downtown. Possible metering or pricing of parking. Potentially adding supply, that's a, that's a, a big step, potentially adding supply, targeting in, in different areas, all these things would be on the table for that discussion. Related, potentially separate, but also potentially the, the same study depending on what direction this takes, it would be a streetscape review. Also related to what we're doing in, in Hubbard Woods right now. Really looking for a, a study, a, a careful consideration, a downtown specific consideration of how we're using our public space. This could include things like we're looking at in Hubbard Woods. Sidewalk size, sidewalk width, curb location, rain sizing throughout downtown, are, are lanes the right size? An increased interest in outdoor dining, is that can be something that continues, it's going to be something that's in different locations, how are we accommodating that? Delivery and carryout usage, the way that we use the curb has changed significantly over the last ten years or so. And related specifically to parking, we do know and we've observed that there's typically a lot more parking on the east side of Green Bay Road than there is on the west side of Green Bay Road. However, anecdotally, a lot of people don't, either, either don't know that that parking is available or don't even consider using it. That may be in part due to there not being an attractive and safe path to walk, either through the Park Avenue metro, Park Avenue intersection or under the, the tracks on Hazel. So this study could include some detailed plans about how to make that a more attractive and safe option for people looking at that on that side of the street. The twenty fifteen plan for downtown, so it, it did clearly express a vision for downtown. Out of that came design guidelines, which are very detailed for how we want downtown to, to look. This has been an ongoing discussion with the conference of plan, which is, as you all know, in progress right now, hopefully wrapping up in the next few months. The, the plan commissions about this discussion with the conference of plan is not proposing any radical changes to, to the vision for downtown. So that's, it would not be a replacement for that vision, however, I think that this, if we were wanting to do a, a streetscape study, it would likely be at the point where we're, we're looking for some really place specific concept plans for things like the park in Green Bay intersection, the path between those parking lots and downtown, the path on Hazel Avenue to get people from those parking lots to downtown. Some, some detailed concepts of the various sidewalks and, and, and public rights away throughout downtown. To get us to where we want to go with, with that vision that was established in twenty fifteen and is continuing through the conference of today. So questions for today for the board? Is this the right time to start down the path of the new parking study and or streetscape plan? And based on tonight's discussion, what should be included or considered in these plans? That'll turn back.
All right, so let me start by saying because it's clear that where ten years ago, we said parking problems were a big member of our imagination. But we now think, no, it's actually true. I, I think we clearly need to turn to this and see if we can do better. I would note that it's way too soon to know how our new twenty-five spaces are going to work, thirty-two spaces across Green Bay Road are going to work out. I mean, it took you, you know, twenty fifteen minutes and nobody knows they're there. And they're actually a pretty good option for a lot of stuff. They're a great option for, you know, Park Avenue, and it's only two blocks. It's closer than going to a shopping center to walk over to Burnington. So we have to see. Here's, here's something I think we should, I mean, we, we should think about. Figuring out what we want our uptown business district to look like is, is complicated. Just started to think about it. But there's also the possibility, which we've been looking at for forty years, so it doesn't mean it's happening, of redevelopment on the south end of town with potentially the public works garage moving. Potentially, there's a, one of the owners of downtown, of the uptown business district, he's been buying up a bunch of stuff. We don't know what he's up to. But maybe something, and maybe we want to participate in that. So as we think about the study and what we want, we should either be thinking about what we want in the greater uptown area, which includes, you know, the south end, maybe where the public works garage is. Or at a minimum, we should try to think about it in a way that the whole plan doesn't get blown up if somebody decides to do something. Because, you know. Something like Monica was interviewing with us and she talked to us the first, she says, well, you know, you don't want to rip up the street and then fix it and then rip it up again because she forgot to think about something else. And I think we ought to apply that to this. Another question, we were all certain, we all got copies of Will Matt's traffic study, which was a traffic, the parking study, which was really interesting. They have a much bigger, bigger business district. I assume they have parking spaces. How many parking spaces excluding our commuter parking, just our, how many do we have?
I think in the general immediate downtown vicinity, it's about four hundred and fifty.
They, they were like a thousand or something.
Yeah, and then their commuter spaces, when you add those in, it is substantially more. And there's no doubt their, their district is substantially larger than ours. But I think the issues are similar, right? It's scaled. They have more restaurants than we do, but based off of the scale of our downtown, we find ourselves with the same problems. I've had this conversation with my colleague and Will Matt a lot. People are circling, looping, finding ways to find a parking space. Not necessarily aware of where all the parking is available or what the rules around that parking might be. And they're scrambling to try to figure out how to direct people appropriately. They're also preparing for small cheval to open and
sorry, the COVID one.
That, I mean, if they had, I think we would be, you know, likewise doing working as quickly as they did to try to determine what, you know, what changes, if any, they're able to make with that. But yeah, there's no doubt, there's no doubt the downtowns are different in terms of their scale and size. But issues are similar. And I, I would take, you know, to your point a moment ago, the intention behind this perhaps is kind of resetting the baseline from the standpoint of understanding the usage patterns of the downtown as it exists today. Any redevelopment that would take place would upend significant portions of that baseline. But that doesn't make it irrelevant because any redevelopment is years off into the future. I do think there are some immediate things we need to consider and talk through and that a study could help us with. Duration of parking, should we be altering or amending or creating different means of allocating the spaces that we have? It's not so much about building new spaces, but how do we use what we have? Is there technology that can be applied toward the use of those spaces differently than we are today? What sort of modest signage changes? Those types of things, I think, are relatively easy to do and certainly inexpensive up against something like the construction of a deck. Right? If we were talking about a construction of a deck, that has to be a component of a redevelopment. So again, that would alter some of the assumptions that are made. Because the, the lot, you know, south of Public Works is a huge parking lot. It supports the business district in that business owners or, or business employees are parking in that lot almost exclusively. In addition to village employees and, and others who work in the downtown, but obviously, a redevelopment would consider whether a surface parking lot makes the most sense there. If we were to change that, that doesn't change the fact that we have business district employees who are going to need to park somewhere, right? So the, the, the levels of assumptions are going to have to shift if we get into a redevelopment discussion. But what we know anecdotally relate to the complaints and the comments that we hear. I drive through the downtown for twenty minutes and I can't find a parking space. I loop and I loop and I loop and I can't find a spot. And I was, I, I, I walked through the downtown fairly regularly and I was walking through yesterday. And it was interesting to me for about fifteen minutes. I was meeting my wife for lunch and I, I was on Vernon Avenue watching cars make the Vernon to Park to Village Court to Hazel loop over and over again, sometimes three times. And I called my wife and I said, hey, park in the new lot across the street. And she was, she, she pulled right into the lot and met me outside of the library. And it was, to your point a moment ago, moments as opposed to the people that I saw literally continuing to loop. So we know we also have kind of a, that perception problem that we discovered or that we knew of in 2014 exists today. We haven't been terribly successful in convincing people to think outside of, of the, perhaps the box that they understand from a parking standpoint. Green Bay Road acts like the Nile River in some ways. It, it's, it's seen as this chasm that you can't get across. But yesterday was a good example, again, anecdotally, of being able to pull into that lot and walk halfway across town while people were still making the same loop over and over again. Trying to understand also how users are parking. We get a lot of comments and questions, why do you have fifteen-minute spaces? Why aren't everything two hour? Why do you have curbside spaces? Why, why would you include those when there's such a shortage of parking? Two hours is too long, two hours is too short. The new lot over here is three hours. We've gotten positive comments that that's great, except it should be one. There's a lot of people who have ideas about what parking is. And what I'd love to be able to finally have is a bit more data on, on a given Thursday afternoon. These were the durations that vehicles parked in our parking, our parking spaces on our streets or in our parking lots. So that we are able to then say, well, actually, the blend is saying that two-hour spaces are the right duration. Or maybe we do need to consider some of our spots being one-hour. Taylor mentioned metering. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to make the impression that having metered spaces makes sense. But it is coming back into play more frequently again as a means of controlling where people park. And metering is a lot different than it used to be when we pulled all of our meters in nineteen ninety-one. So
You don't need meters for what?
You, you don't, you don't. So, but it made that, could that be a solution that we employ on certain days of the week? Maybe, maybe not. There's just a lot, and I will tell you, you go to a conference and you are bombarded with parking management vendors. That is the thing, right? You're going to solve all of life's problems by buying this technology. I, I appreciate that those are perspectives that are out there, but I do think being able to pinpoint what our problems are before we start trying to implement a technol, a technology solution or something else would be, again, the right way to do it. So going back to your point of not spending good money after bad, getting that data set that we can then build off of as we consider the future. And then tying that to what Taylor's mentioning with respect to the streetscape. We have had this, this conversation over time. Trustee Rubin has brought it up several times. You know, this idea of there may be strategic locations in the downtown where we would capably lose parking to gain something else. To gain a, a, an improved sidewalk experience for an enhanced dining, but outdoor dining program. Or you rearrange how parking exists in some locations based off of uses. Now, you want to be careful not to invest because of a single use that could change in the future. But again, kind of taking an eagle eye look at our, at our streetscape. I want to point out, nobody is saying that our streetscape is ugly, needs to be overhauled. I, I don't think that's true at all. I think it's more a question of this streetscape was designed in two thousand and one. The business district was very different in two thousand and one. It is very different today even than it was five years ago, than it was ten years ago. And there may be strategic ways for us to enhance the streetscape to, to better address the needs in the downtown. I think Taylor's point, particularly the connection points between the, the parking lots and the west side of Green Bay Road, that's been a point of discussion with Writers Theater. Writers Theater didn't exist in the downtown the last time we did this. The last time we did this study in the way that it exists in, in Glencoe today. But I remember doing cartwheels in the street when we heard that Writers Theater was attracting seventy thousand people a year into that facility. Now we're hearing we have restaurants that are doing significantly more than that. So how can, how does the streetscape embrace the uses perhaps that exist, but also the uses that we want to attract in the future as well? So I, I just wanted to add a little bit more to Taylor's points to help with some of the questions and thoughts that you all may have.
Other questions?
So first, just to piggyback off something President Rowan said. We've only had the new, the enhanced parking for fifteen minutes. Are there ways that we could incentivize people? I mean, thinking outside the box beyond just the great signs that direct people across the street or whatever. Like we do a contest or a drawing or something that just raises consciousness around it so that we can at least see if people might use it. Because whatever the case, streetscape, no streetscape parking study, no parking study, it's going to take a while to do any of those things. So that might be something we think about in the interim. And this is maybe just a sort of a novice question, but what it seems to me, why would you do the streetscape work without a parking study? Parking study without the streetscape work? To me, those things feel so interrelated in a town of this size, I can't imagine. I just, I don't, it gets all or nothing to me. And then again, another sort of novice question, but is it, is there a scenario where when you take someone on to do this work, they wouldn't some of this be part of that? Meaning just part and parcel, like it's not a separate cost, a standalone cost, it's something that folds into a larger project?
Well, I'll take your first question. I, I do think they have to be done in concert with what I think, I think it makes sense because when you're, as I just mentioned, contemplating whether you're, you're augmenting your streetscape in some locations that may remove a parking space or two, or move things around so that handicap spaces could be inserted where they can't fit today or things like that. You're going to want to understand what that's going to do more broadly to your parking counts, but also the value to the streetscape. So I do think, and Taylor and I were talking about that today quite a bit. I do think there's more value in this kind of being a more unified effort that ties those things together and kind of builds that review on top of one another. They don't have to be, they, they really shouldn't be independent of one another. Can you ask your second question perhaps a little differently? I don't know that I
So I guess what I want to say about, again, just this is not my area of expertise, but it, it seems to me, if you want a parking study standalone, you have to pay for a parking study. If you want a streetscape study, you have to pay for a streetscape study. But I, I can see a scenario where if you under, if you contract with someone to do the streetscape, the parking study is sort of folded into, yeah, in a way that there is cost savings.
Instead of doing the à la carte version, yeah, I, I, yes, I, I think that's true. I don't know that to be absolutely true. I think that's something we would want to test out during our Q process. I do think there are some really thoughtful consultants out there that could be very helpful to us in thinking about things holistically. But I think, I do think we're leaning toward the path of if we do this, we try to, we try to integrate these two things together.
I agree. I think doing them in concert with each other is a pretty good idea. Pretty good big thinking, you know, versus the à la carte options. I think the RQ is a good idea and we could also, you know, we're almost done with the plan. So we, a lot of the thinking of what we want our downtown to look like has been done. So now we're just getting some of the leads. So I think now's a good time for, when the comp plan is done or at some point soon. We just want to recommend that when we do our parking study, we make sure we do it during the peak season, not for summer months, you know, when school's in session. Ball or spring, not, things are slow around here, so we have adequate numbers and things, but that's all.
I think it's time to take a look at it again. There've been a lot of changes in our use of downtown. Also, a lot more people in the downtown. In our, for an example, of hometown experience, when your people are waiting half an hour for a cup of coffee and that park someplace. So I think there's changes that definitely needed, we need to take a look at that. One of the things I was thinking about is some of this stuff. Nobody knows the answer. And there's a, a branch of planning that's getting very a lot of press now in the planning community, it's called tactical urbanism. And actually, Will Matt had an example of that on Lake Street, where they're going to add the bike lanes and they put down the plungers along the street and it didn't work. But what, what I was saying that some of this, some of our approach needs to be not only based on fact, but somewhat experimental. You know, we don't know exactly, you know, will work, will, will, won't work. There's some big changes. I know Hensales is struggling with the same issue. I think they added some big parking in there, in their downtown. But as for, you know, doing both studies together, yeah, they should complement each other very much. And I, I'm an incrementalist and, you know, there are thousand small things can make a big difference. And, and, you know, don't have to have a big grand plan. Say, oh, let's try this, or let's try that, or this might help that way. And again, just, you know, post-COVID, there are a lot more people around during the day and they use up space.
Let me ask you a question about, you know, we saw the Will Matt study, which I thought was really interesting. That looked to me like a parking study.
That wasn't parking.
Not a combined thing. And I, you know, I actually wonder whether, I mean, we would want anybody doing a parking study to be thinking about parking for what? So you got to sort of think about it. So you gotta sort of think about it. I, you know, whether we could be successful in doing it together, I don't know, I don't know enough. But I, we clearly need to start. I mean, it's, it's not just anecdotal that. People are driving around and. There'll be, if if Glencoe seems like a bad place to go because you can't park. I mean. But, you know, we all have pals in the city and they would invite you to visit them and you think, oh, no, I don't wanna do that. Drive is terrible, you can't park, it costs a million dollars, and so you don't go. And so what's important is Glencoe needs to be a place you wanna go.
So I think, I think as we've been talking about it, that that's very much front of mind for us, right? So. The complaints that come in are. Around the fact of frustration, right? It's not that it's like, boy, it would be really nice if you had a couple of more parking spaces over here. It's how come you have ruined my day? By accommodating curbside spaces or outdoor dining or something? If you didn't have those things, then I would have found a parking space. Now, we know anecdotally that's not true, right? You don't solve a parking problem by adding eight or nine spaces back into the mix. But it's a perception issue and I do think we have to work on that perception issue. We worry about it very much from the standpoint of supporting and sustaining. The economic driver that is our village center. Um, you think about what it is like to see our parking lots full on a Friday and Saturday evening. Well into the night. That's because people are coming here to dine or go to Writers Theater or do something at one of the. One of the art galleries. Those kinds of things didn't really happen very much ten years ago. And so we want, we we kind of caught lightning in a bottle. This downtown in the last five years is almost a whole different place than it was pre-COVID. Dudley's point is right on. There's a lot more people who are here a lot more than they used to be. They're not going into the city five days a week. Maybe they're going to the city two days a week and they're working. Uh, I have a neighbor who rotates between the library and hometown and Starbucks. And can't wait to rotate to the golf course, but he works four days a week from Glencoe. He's not going into the city anymore. So that's a reality that we also didn't have as much. I do think that's impacting parking. I do think part of the streetscape question also talks about. What are we gonna do about bicycle safety and pedestrians? Getting people into the, into the downtown business district. We don't want them on sidewalks because they're running people over or almost running people over. But we also don't want them on the streets because it's not all that safe, but we want them to ride their bikes to the downtown. Well. Gonna have to do something for that. We don't have enough bike parking. Those are, those are just realities. We've augmented them here and there. Um, we've changed some signage, we've updated some things, but. I think there have been some incremental approaches that have given us some good data. Um, and I don't think they cost us a lot of money, which is hopeful. Um, and I'm, I'm a big, I believe exactly what you said, that. I think you can do a bunch of small things to make a big difference as opposed to one really big, really expensive thing. That people may or may not utilize. Um, decked parking, everybody says it'd be great, build a parking deck, except nobody parks in parking decks in suburban downtowns. So.
That's really expensive.
Really expensive, really, really expensive.
Space costs more than the car.
Yeah, so we, uh, it seems to me, we're gonna do a parking study. We're gonna maybe do an RFP that covers the possibility of making it more. Uh, streetscaping to, but before we even do any of that, I thought Trusty Scott was right on. We, we have this brilliant idea that nobody thought of the last five years of opening up. These thirty-two spots. But we need to get people to use them. So we should try and, we should try to figure out everything we can. Uh, you know, including signage that if you've driven around and want to just go across.
I don't know, that's something.
Yeah, you know, I'll tell you, it's interesting to me because we have two automated message boards in the downtown directing people across the street. They ignore them. Um, and I do think we've talked about ways of of, you know, catching your eye across the street somehow. I think I'm I'm happy to try some of that, you know, Sammy's in the midst of coming up with new signage. Um, uh, for the, for the downtown. That will hopefully direct people that way. We're pushing it out on social media. It's getting good feedback and so people are are grateful for it. But that lot's still two thirds empty most days.
Are we monitoring it? Because that would be very interesting, not to see.
Public safety is enforcing, so we can get, we can derive some data. But I'll tell you, you want, I I can see it from my office. And it is seldom that there's any vehicles visible from my office. That means they're all at the the north end.
And you're what I find, so what I find, because I've used it for train parking. You kind of drive in there, it's very hidden and there's big bushes and there's no visibility.
Yes, I think that's a problem.
Park there going, oh, do I really wanna park there? I'd rather be someplace a little bit more open. So I think that.
Hold back some of that.
Yeah, right, that people, they're not gonna see it, they're not gonna be aware, aware that it's very tucked away. So I'm just not sure how inviting that is or.
And those are things we can do. I mean, we can, we can remove, we've talked about that, removing some of the, this, some of the foliage, especially at the far north end of the entrance. So that you can even see that it's a parking lot. Um, getting more, uh, we may push one of the the message boards across Green Bay Road. So that it now is pointing directly into the entrance. Um, as opposed to the more general, go across the street, you'll be fine. Um, but yeah, I I agree. I think there are small things we can do to incentivize that. I do think it will be a good thing, um, once people figure it out. So by the way.
In terms of the people figuring it out, I think, I'm wondering how many people think, wait a minute. Every time I go by there, if I walk the dog by there or if I drive by there, whatever, I see the sign, it's, you've gotta pay to park. In the lots over there, never mind the new signage for the one bit, but even the other bit. Which means they don't even realize that after, you know, if they wanna come for lunch. There's no more paid to park.
The upper sign has been updated already.
Right, but I don't know, but unless you wanna bother to read parking signs. As you're driving or walking and not intending to park there, no one's reading this. Right? I mean, it's gonna take a long time. So I think part of the messaging should be not just about the new lot. But remind them that there's gazillion spaces available on virtually any day. That are free after about ten o'clock in the morning for five steps.
I think, and we have been doubling down on that messaging for the entire time I've been here.
Hmm.
Um. Habits are hard to break. You've gotta do something over and over again to kind of start a new habit. I'm hopeful that we can do that. This parking lot has only been available for almost two and a half weeks.
Two thirds.
Right, so we know that it's very recent. There's a lot that we can continue to do and we will do. It also isn't the solution to all of life's problems, but it's a big start. And I was gratified to see a number of our businesses that have email, um. Uh, email distribution lists for their customers are sharing the information. We've asked them to do that. We are gonna continue to ask them to do that. I do think over time, people, you do it once and you're like, wow, this is really great. How did I not know this was here? And you have a good experience and hopefully that leads to that same action.
Need some kind of cute things like big signs that are up for a while, like tired of going in circles? Park over there.
Oh, that's a good point, yeah.
Come on, yeah, they'll catch their old spot.
Put a shot out there.
So, um. The. The big, the big north lot, which is a commuter lot, is, it's mostly filled.
That's usually filled.
But not on Fridays and maybe not on Mondays, definitely not on weekends, so not on Saturdays. Uh, which means we also want people to be able to walk from that lot, which which raises the uh, the crosswalk.
Yeah.
And it's very important that we upgrade that so that it's safer. Because everything we do will seem ruined if somebody gets angry.
All of the crosswalks, all of the crossings that are both at grade and below grade need some attention. Um, I I think the Tudor Court crossing needs a lot of attention, but I would say the same thing is true of Park Avenue. Um, you cross the street and you feel like you've entered a different place. This, the, the sidewalks are cracked, the curbing doesn't make sense, it's very narrow. Um, I do think accommodating the downtown streetscape's look. On that side of the street makes a person visually say, oh, these things are connected. Oh, this does make sense. Oh, okay, I can cross the street. So I I do think those are pieces of it, but Tudor for sure. Um, I think, you know, when, when Tudor was put in, when that pedestrian crossing was put in. Back in twenty fifteen, um, we knew at that time it wasn't in its final form. And it needed some additional um, thought and. Here we are nine years later and we're still talking about it, so I do think.
Second, we did do the Tudor Court.
We did. I'm just talking about this, the crossing over Green Bay Road, yeah. Yeah.
All right, well, look, I. I think, I think there should be enough guidance for staff. There's the hard stuff, big parking study. There's the stuff that is, we hope, a little bit easier, like figuring out how to get. See if we can make a success of our new thirty, our new thirty-two spaces. For forty years, I parked in that lot as a commuter. But, okay, I don't need it anymore. And, and so the village has taken it.
That's not the reason, by the way.
It's not.
Because I was watching it all.
I'm just curious, if we had, say, wanted to, are we able to take a portion of? The other commuter lot that's just north of Park and make that finally.
It's, it's, you know, I I look.
Yeah.
No, no, no. Those could just be the first thirty spaces or whatever, could just be.
That, the interesting thing about that lot, the interesting thing about that lot is you actually don't have very many parking spaces for the first two hundred feet.
Right.
There's a, there's a lot of handicap spots. Um, we have, there's a mailbox, there's a few things, I think there's only maybe. Ten regular parking spaces because you have the drop off.
Where's the drop off?
Potentially, I I would say. I need to double check, there is, if we were to make many things to it, I know there, the, the unique, um, Union Pacific. Glencoe property line that runs along there, we do have an agreement with the U P to utilize those areas for parking. Um, I mean, we would need to double check that, but that may be a, that may be an alternative.
I mean, I can calving it on both sides and you have much more presence and dominance there, there's sort of.
Yeah, especially when you're in the landscape and the landscape.
You could find yourself a lot of space.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a really good point.
We absolutely should look.
They could look.
That's more attractive.
Don't wanna torture a commuter.
You know, right, but I know, and I am a commuter, so I I totally agree with that. But if there is, and I, I never park on the east side, but if there is adequate spaces elsewhere.
Well, it's more full than it used to be on the east side.
Do computers take the U P North Line? We are fairly high.
We're a good group.
Yeah, we take things in stride.
But, but crossing the tracks is a step. And if you don't get a spot in the southeast lot, then it's kind of a hike.
Because that southeast lot right now. Is it ever filled?
Yes.
Now it does fill during the day. Okay, so later in the day when people are using it, then.
Probably work money or some of the reason that's true is because the thirty-two spaces that used to be over here aren't. So those, the village employees are moving over there, library employees are moving over there.
I'm being able to go over and should have a work.
Yeah, but that lot fills up too. So the temple lot is full most days. We have, well, no, we don't actually, because keep in mind, business district parking includes Grove, Greenwood. Uh, and Park Avenue, there's street parking. Those, there are angle spaces all at the other end of Central School that are available for the business district. They are longer walks, which means they don't like them as much, but they're, they're available. Our parking, when you put it in the aggregate, is, there's a lot, there is a lot. But it's how it's used and how it's allocated that becomes the question.
Okay, uh, I think there's enough guys.
Very helpful, yes, thank you.
Helpful, um, I, we got two really good ideas over here. We got a good, you know, we got good ideas from trust, trustees, so that's great. Anybody else wanna talk about the um, parking uptown streetscape? Okay, so that concludes plant business. Is there any other business for the Queen of the Hall? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All failures.
Aye, aye.
Or adjourned, is there any theory that we do our, we do our close?
Yeah, I mean, you could do it if you want. Although we just adjourned the meeting, so.
But, but couldn't we?
It's supposed to be as a component of.
It could read, it could read.
So it's, what if people think they're trying to do the closed session right now?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so this is part two of our Queen of the Hall. You know, we've never closed.
You, you just follow it.
I call it back to where we need to roll call.
Yeah, we do. Um, Trusty Hallwax?
Here.
Listener?
Yeah.
Trusty Mealopolis?
It's an underdog here.
Trusty David?
Yeah.
Trusty Scott?
Yeah.
President Rowan?
Here, okay, we're gonna, we, we called this public meeting to not have a public meeting. Is there a motion in a closed session to review?
To review closed session minutes for approval and please.
Will you? I, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Aye.